Counselors, have you had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting?
Yeah, the motion to approve. Oh, my bad.
Second.
All in favor say aye. I'm proud of you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes from the last meeting have passed. Hunter. Counselors, are there any items you'd like to place on consent agenda? Counselor Abbott or Madam President?
She wanted to go those missing.
Yes.
It's working now. I would like to place items four, six, seven, and eight on consent if there are no objections.
Second.
Uh, so just to repeat that, that's item four on page one, items six and seven on page two, and item eight on page three. Um, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. Uh, if your item was placed on the consent agenda, you may go and enjoy the sunny afternoon. Okay, item number five, a professional services agreement between the city of Birmingham and Operation Hope Incorporated, under which Operation Hope will provide professional financial wellness services to the city and its employees to include educational workshops and presentations, one-on-one coaching and counseling, credit and money management education, referrals, home ownership resources, and financial disaster preparedness, and such other assistance from time to time as required and requested by the city for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand per year term of one year.
Who the item?
Second. Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Gemma Dyson, Chief Human Resource Officer. Operation Hope has been with us for two years already. This is the third year that we agreed to. We have had success with Operation Hope. Um, in the first quarter of the calendar year, there were one hundred and eighty-one employees served. There were one hundred and seventy-four different services provided. The average household income of the individuals who are seeking the services is one thousand three hundred and forty-five. There was an impact on FICO scores, increasing scores by seventeen points on average. Paying exchange of thirty-one dollars. Fortunately, there was an increase in debt, but that really is more attributable to what's going on now in the economy. Until now, until the last two quarters, we've seen that going down, but with inflation, prices in gas, probably repay check. Help our employees know how to navigate around this. Services have increased because Judy Woods, who's the current counselor, has been working a lot with our employees to get them signed up for the student loan waiver program.
That's good.
So, um, that's important. Um, of course, we want to take advantage of what President Biden put in place.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Abbott, do you have any questions?
I do. You said one hundred and eighty-one employees were served, I assume, in this past year?
Past quarter.
Past quarter, oh, all right. Okay, and their average income is twenty-nine thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am. Our target audience is Department of Public Works as well as home income employees and industry workers.
Are some of these people part-time employees or?
They could be part-time employees, but, you know, she bases her average income on what they provide based on their tax returns, so it probably is their adjusted gross income after.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Madam President?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very excited to see a continuation of this program. So I think looking at the data that you've given us, it's been very helpful to our employees. The amount being requested is, how is this in relationship to the amounts of the previous programs?
So, um, this is exactly the same amount that we paid for the last two years. The contract cost is actually a hundred thousand dollars, but Regions Bank subsidizes this contract for the city by paying, excuse me, twenty-five thousand dollars towards it. And it basically goes to cover the cost of the counselor that's provided by Operation Hope as well as office supplies that she may need, as well as the cost of doing, because she has been trying to do online seminars. Um, she is stationed at the library and we do provide the location free of charge.
Okay. Thank you. And this counselor you said is Ms. Woods, correct?
Yes, Judy Woods.
Because I know she worked with, um, United Way or another agency, so I know she's got a real good lot of expertise in this, so thank you. Those are my only questions. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any other counselors that have any questions?
Okay, well, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The item passes. Thank you. Um, item number nine. Who is the wrong one? Okay. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with BeGrace Media LLC pursuant to section eleven dash forty-seven dash nineteen and section eleven dash forty-seven dash sixteen, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. These events will attract visitors, service providers, and entrepreneurs to the city of Birmingham. All of these will have an economic impact on the city by generating revenue from taxes and fees. Therefore, these events will be authorized under amendment number seven hundred and seventy-two of the Constitution of Alabama. The fee for the services related to assisting the city with these events shall not exceed the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, yeah, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Services shall include all, um, BGM, which is BeGrace Media, expenses to organizing, promoting, managing, and facilitating of a Safe Summer Concert Series project, the quote "events." These free events will be held in the city of Birmingham parks throughout the city of Birmingham during the months of August, September, and October twenty, twenty-two. BeGrace Media will be responsible for securing and organizing all advertisers, informational, educational providers, suppliers, and vendors for the event. BeGrace Media will be responsible for booking and any payment of all DJs and performing artists for the event, for procuring staging, sound, and lighting equipment and operators, if not provided by performers, and for event setup and breakdown. BeGrace Media will coordinate with the city regarding crowd control, security, parking, signage, and other similar activities. BeGrace Media will consult with a representative of the city regarding the selection of the performers, advertisers, informational, educational providers, and vendors for the event.
Who the item?
Second. I'm not really sure because I think that's like our event, but Madam President? Oh, hey, Chelsea. You want to come up here? Is she out here?
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, so I guess just tell us a little bit about Safe Summer Series. Just give us, I guess for the new counselors too, because they weren't able to have one last year.
Between BeGrace Media, the city of Birmingham, and Jefferson County Department of Health, where we provide a safe concert series for, um, the residents of Birmingham. Last year we did it. We had about thirty-five thousand people who attended. We had them in all the different council districts. We had the health department there. We had a total of a hundred and thirty people get COVID vaccines. Um, we had up to about fifty, fifty vendors, and it was just a really good time. I mean, it was a good opportunity for people to get out and just engage with the community, and it was a huge economic impact. Ninety-two percent of our vendors were minority-owned, so it was a good economic impact for the city.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, do you have any questions? Counselor Abbott?
I do. Um, do we have a list of where the events will be held? And the dates? I mean, I, uh, I hate to admit it, I didn't get through all my backup information.
Yeah, so we have a tentative date, so all of these dates are subject to change. Um, and so this year we're limited to between four and five concerts, and we're going to do Railroad Park. Hold on one second, let me. We're going to do Railroad Park, Memorial Park, Wiggins Park, um, Ensley Park, and Memorial Park, Road Park, Ensley Park, and the Botanical Gardens. And the reason that we did it this way is because all of the parks touch council, council district.
Okay. Railroad Park, Memorial Park, Wiggins Park?
Park, Ensley Park.
Ensley Park and Botanical Gardens.
And Botanical Gardens. And there is some conversation about, um, Pinson Valley.
Okay.
And the goal, and the goal with picking these, um, parks is because they're aligned through, um, through all counselors.
Okay, what are the tentative dates?
So we have August seventh, August twenty-first, September tenth, September twenty-fifth, and October twenty-third.
Wait, you went to first. August seventh, August twenty-first?
September tenth, September twenty-fifth, and October twenty, twenty-third.
Well, whoever has August seventh, I expect some birthday cake, so. All right, um, Counselor Abbott, do you have any more questions? I do. In the last, second to last sentence in that big long description that our chairman read, it says, "BGM will coordinate with the city regarding crowd control, security, parking, signage, and other similar activities." So, does that mean that the city is going to fund all those things or provide all those things?
Well, we haven't got to that point yet, because this is actually my first time seeing it, so I'm assuming, and Mr. McDaniels just stood up, um, and it sounds like it would probably be a request.
Okay, if you've not seen it, whose contract is it?
This is the city council's contract.
Our contract.
It's the same Safe Summer Series concerts we did last year. Okay, so then you can answer. Is the city providing crowd control, security, parking, signage, and other similar activities? It is from my understanding, yes. Unless, am I wrong, Jeff?
As an opportunity to see, counselors use their waiver for those who chose a Safe Summer Concert Series, pay the cost for security at the events that are. Counselors did not necessarily have a Safe Summer Concert Series, so all are not requested for those who did use it.
Okay, that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam President? Thank you very much. I thank you, Ms. Shepherd, for, um, I know that last year you worked with us to bring this series for our residents. Um, as you said, um, the economic impact, I think, was very important, and a lot of us were just coming out of the throes of, um, COVID. Not that we're beyond it yet, but I, I do want to say that for the two or three that I attended, there was a lot of, um, family involvement, and it was, um, people were having opportunity to get out the house and enjoy some good music. So I am looking forward to this series coming back again. Thank you.
Okay, um, Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Moore. Okay, Counselor Moore.
So, yes, I just, I had a question. Was this something that, you know, each counselor was, um, I guess, given the opportunity to request to take place at different parks within their districts?
That one, I didn't.
So what we're trying to do is do the.
We can't hear you that much. Have you talked?
Sorry, you gotta talk directly.
I'm sorry. What we're trying to do is do it in parks where we can pull from each. So I think it's East Pinson Valley. I think you and Counselor Woods kind of share that. Is that correct?
Or it's in the general vicinity. Is that correct?
So, so that's the goal. So, I mean, Road Park or Botanical Gardens, you know what I mean? So the goal is to kind of go somewhere, Ensley Park for y'all too, right? Don't kind of share that?
We don't share clearly.
Okay, well, we don't know this part. Okay, well, the intent was to have them in parks that are close in close proximity to districts to make sure that everybody can bring people from their communities. Um, we're not sold on all, all of the parks. We just picked, picked parks that we thought would be conducive for all council members, and so there can be more conversation around.
Because whatever amount is over this, counselors will have to supplement for. So I think mine was, it wasn't that far over the budget, so it's probably like two thousand, three thousand dollars of my discretionary funding.
And if you want, so, and I will say this too, we're amenable to it. So if you guys want to have your own, if you say, hey, I don't necessarily want to go to that park. I would like to have something in my park. We, we definitely can do that. We just have to kind of work with you and figure out which one to pull from your district.
Uh, yeah, keep on.
I just wanted to ask, um, how we're defining summer? You know what I mean?
It's not that techni, well, we live in Alabama, so the summer is really not in Oklahoma, but.
They don't have to all be before or.
Uh, it's, it's August, September, and October, because, you know, we have the World Games in July, so that kind of wipes out July.
Okay. Could it go beyond? Could it be something else? Could it be an indoor concert? Could it be?
Well, if you know.
I'm just asking, because if it gets into the cold.
I was gonna say, if you notice, the last one is the week before classic, so by that time, I think it's October twenty-third is the last one.
And I think former Counselor Parker had one outside.
So when you start looking at the weather and those type things, it, we're also August, September, October. We did start a little earlier last year, I believe, but we weren't competing with the World Games. So this is to still give the opportunity to our residents to have something during our summer, what we call Alabama's summer month, and leading them up into, that October one will depend on, again, the climate. But we went up to October last year and didn't have any problem.
I will say this, it rained every last Safe Summer Series last year, and it still is stopping. I mean, it rained every single one.
So who's managing the contract for us? I mean, who's, who's setting these terms or proposed terms?
We're working with the council administration, and so this was, um, to get the contract before us, as is being presented today. As Ms. Shepherd said, there's continued dialogue, and that we'll be working with each council individual. She will have an opportunity to, um, as counselor, pro tem, as I already said. If you want to have one very specific for your district, then that's when you can also utilize discretionary funds to make that happen. This way, we have more concerts we're able to give collectively as a group versus individually.
Okay, so that would be outside of this contract if I wanted to do one. Okay. Okay. So, so this is what it is?
Not necessarily. I think we're open to.
What do you mean?
What do you have?
I just mean the defined series and locations. I guess we don't know.
No, she just said, she just said they're open to, to different parks, and the artist, you, you have a list of artists. But you can, I'm sure you can give her a name of the artist, but then you have to think about your budget, so.
Okay. I just don't know how it works. I have no idea.
Well, we were there, and I was here, so.
So, so what we're approving is the funding and to enter a contract with her to produce these for us.
Yeah.
And some of the details are TBD.
I would say to this point, and I maybe I'll let Ms. Shepherd answer.
So, yes, you, right now, we are having a conversation about, it's just having a conversation.
We can't hear you.
We are open to do pretty much anything that you guys would like us to do within the confines of our budget. So just let us know. We have a list of artists that we've already started to look at. Um, and within those artists, we'll share that with you. You can say, hey, I like this person. I would like this person. But we have to be very cognizant that we do only have a certain amount of money, so, you know, we can't give Beyonce, you know? Um, but definitely make sure that we're trying to find something for everybody. That's the goal.
And the reason it's outdoor is because we want to be, um, COVID-friendly, yeah, because indoor, you can't control that, honestly, so. You got it? Counselor Moore, anybody else have any questions?
So I would like to show the video from last year.
Yeah, um, Colleen, can you play the video? Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The item passes. Um, did Mr. Datcher have something he wanted to bring up?
I have, I have. I think he said that it was going to be passed out, so Mr. Datcher, since you're walking in, can you please, uh, present this project to the council that you didn't ask us to add to the agenda? Thank you.
One of the positives to COVID is that Mr. Mitchell hasn't worn a mask. Um, good afternoon, Kelvin Datcher, Office of Community Development. Um, counselors, there are several things that we. Uh, one of the things we want to talk to you guys about.
Wait a minute, Datcher, let me read.
This is context. This is not that item. Corey's actually going to do the actual work.
Datcher, let us read it.
Ma'am?
Let us read it real quick.
Okay.
If it's okay with the committee, can we, um, add item ten to the agenda? Depends on what it is. It is the Uptown Jazz Lounge. Uptown Entertainment. And it's an emergency? I believe so. Is it emergency? Yeah, I believe so. Well, why don't we, you know, have the item come before us, and then we can ask all those questions, so. Um, item ten, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a loan agreement with Uptown Entertainment LLC, Uptown Jazz Lounge, located at twenty-two fifty Suite B, Suite B, Ninth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh three, for a community development block grant, CDBG, small business loan in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents for a term of ten years to provide financing for machinery and equipment and related soft costs. Loan is secured by machinery and equipment and personal loan guarantee.
Who died?
Second.
Good morning, Council Kelvin Datcher, Office, Department of Community Development. Um, there are several, since the mayor's reform at the community development, there are several business-related funds and resources that are available in the Office of Community Development that we are going to partner very closely with, um, the Department of Innovation, Economic Opportunity. Um, that includes, um, the HUD one oh eight, uh, that you guys have seen deployed for rather large projects, a rural rehab project, uh, program that will be used for mixed income, a facade improvement that will allow for signage and the frontage of businesses, different small businesses to be impacted. And then fourthly, this small business, uh, small business fund. Dr. Venable Thomas, uh, has began a regular CADA meetings with Cordell Wesley, NIEO, so that there's a synergy leveraging these resources to make sure that the small businesses in the city of Birmingham have access to everything available through the community development, uh, black and red process. This is one of the funds that we've really kind of elevated, uh, among visibility among the leadership of the department over the last several weeks. And Uptown Jazz is absolutely perfect kind of partner that the city should be investing in, uh, to get up and off the ground and get going in the city of Birmingham.
First, I would like to say, senior deputy director of community development, I'll give you a brief overview of the request today, which is to loan approximately one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents of our CDBG funding from community development allocated through our small business loan program. And we are, uh, recommending to allocate this funding to the newly formed Uptown Jazz Lounge. Uptown Jazz Lounge is located at twenty-two fifty Ninth Avenue North. Uh, just as a landmark, it is underneath the parking garage. Uptown Jazz Lounge is a minority-owned business with Mr. Roger Cunwell as his managing member, and he is here to give a overview and help ask, uh, answer any questions. This lounge is very important to the area as it will be one of the first, uh, music entertainment venues in that area. Just give a, uh, overview of the loan and some of the terms. This loan will be used to, uh, cover furnishing, inventory, building equipment used to, uh, support the business. The loan will have an interest rate of five percent, uh, which the owner will have ten years to pay back. Uh, that five percent interest will, uh, come to about twenty thousand that we will be recycling back into our small business loan program, which will help us to further the work of, uh, supporting, uh, businesses in Birmingham. Loan will be backed by a personal guarantee as collateral, as well as a lien, uh, will be placed on the furnishings and serve as collateral as well. Total development cost to open the lounge is approximately about five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the CDBG loan will cover about thirty-five percent of the total development cost, uh, and Mr. Cunwell and his partners have identified, uh, the remaining funding needed to support opening of the business, which is about three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars after our loan is allocated. Small business loan program also requires, uh, that a job, jobs be created for low to moderate income individuals for every fifty thousand dollars allocated. And so that'll be approximately about four jobs, uh, full-time jobs that will be created. So not only will this be a, a benefit, revenue-wise, this will also be a benefit in creating jobs. And that's a requirement of the CDBG. That's just a brief overview. Uh, we're excited to support this project, uh, and Mr. Cunwell is looking to be open in time. So I'll also invite Mr. Cunwell to give some.
Before you bring him up, Mr. Datcher, can you explain the urgency of this? Because it didn't go through one committee.
Thank you, Counselor. We have been working with, uh, the department has been working with Mr. Cunwell for, um, some time now to try to get this done so that he can be open in time for the World Games. There were some challenges, both internally for us and then some external challenges. He's been able to manage his. We do want to thank and credit Taz Snyder, uh, at the BJCC for getting him where he needs to go on the construction side over there, so they were able to get that done. He is approaching his CO, which will allow him to get that business license that is essential to operation as well. So, something was really, uh, some internal challenges on my part.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodrick Cunwell, and I am the managing partner for our Uptown Entertainment LLC.
Okay, uh, Counselor Abbott, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, how many employees did he say you were going to create? How many jobs?
We're going to have currently approximately eleven. Right now, we have eleven.
Okay, and, and tell me the location is, in the bottom of a park, which parking deck?
Oh, we're located twenty-two fifty Ninth Avenue North, Suite B. Um, right underneath the parking deck was what you was, the old BJCC parking deck. It still serves that purpose, if you're familiar with Eugene's Hot Chicken, uh, right on the corner. We're on, we are two down from Eugene's Hot Chicken.
Okay, thank you.
Asian City Bar.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, thank you very.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cunwell, can you tell us a little bit about the business? I know you said it's a lounge atmosphere. Why do you think this would work in this particular area? I know you're very adjacent to Uptown, and, um, do you know what other type venues you have there? Or would you be something unique to this area?
A couple of things. One, it is, uh, conducive to hotels there, Western and Sheraton, obviously. And for us to provide entertainment for companies and different things that the hotel may have for, for their, uh, business coming in from out of state, as well as obviously the location to the. as well as obviously the location to the other, all the events that will be current. Other areas in Uptown Entertainment District, no entertainment. So we want to provide that to make that name more accurate for what it serves. Also, venue that will provide live entertainment, obviously. We want to make sure we accommodate Birmingham too, because that's something that's been lacking for this type of music. Combinating with all citizens of Birmingham. Areas were quite conducive and the.
Thank you. Any other counselors with any questions? Counselor Tate?
How many people would a venue hold?
It has a capacity of 95 inside and we're looking at outside.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Moore, did you have a question? No, okay. Anybody else? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, this is not a question. It's just a reminder to everyone that personal information should be redacted from all of these piles of paper y'all give us, social security numbers, driver's licenses. Because if they get in the wrong hands, it'll be our fault.
Well, we'll make sure to note that for when it appears on the council agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it's a big deal because, you know, you know why it's a big deal? So, thank you.
Say anyone else? Okay, well, there's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. That I am passes, thank you. The next Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be on Monday, July 25th at 3:30 PM because of the World Games. Is there a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye, thank you.